To have some fun together like that. Thank you, Councilor Rotundo, for making that happen. So, on our agenda this evening, just to run through so that we're all on the same page, we have the Bike and Pedestrian Committee that will be presenting one of their regular updates to us. We have Mayor Cahill, who will be offering the State of the City address. And then we have some routine business. We'll take a brief break for some subcommittee work, and then we'll come back and finish everything up. So with that, I'll officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, seven o'clock P.M. And Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll?
Bowen?
Here.
Crowley?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Housman?
Here.
Rotundo?
Yeah.
Spang?
Here.
St. Halaire?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
And Flowers.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. I'm here. Councilor Sweeney, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilor Sweeney. I know we have many members of our city staff and members of the administration here with us this evening, and thank you for joining us. I also know Mayor Cahill likes to take the opportunity to introduce and to thank you all as he starts his State of the City, so I will hold off. But I will say thank you to all of you for joining us and for the work that you do every day for our city. With that, we will go right to our first presentation. This is going to be from the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. And so I thank you all for being here and for the work that you do. As you know, because you've done some updates already, our presentations are about fifteen minutes, inclusive of question and answer, so I'll turn the floor over to you. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Carl Keimdun from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. I want to introduce members of the committee. There's Lisa Chandler, Jonathan Salt, John Hershey, Jared Porter, Paul Gentili, and Jennifer Plowman could not make it tonight. Our model is we meet once a quarter, we get work done between meetings, and we give two updates a year. This is the first update for this year. We want to talk about our major areas of focus and progress to date. First up tonight, we're going to give you an update on incident reporting. We've got four years' worth of data from the Police Department on bicyclists and pedestrian incidents. Now, on average, every three and a half weeks in Beverly, there's one pedestrian incident. Every six and a half weeks, there's one bicyclist incident. So what we're trying to do is understand why we have incidents and what we can do to minimize or eliminate incidents. The new reporting in the state in terms of write-ups on incidents is much more informative, so we can understand where infrastructure may or may not contribute to incidents. So Jared Porter will be giving an update on that. We have a city bike map that was put together in two thousand and fifteen. About ten miles of that map has been done over the years. That map is now being reviewed and integrated of the three-year paving plan. And Jonathan Salt and Lisa Chandler have been driving that, who will give an update on that. Basically, what we're talking about is paint on pavement. Bike lanes are talked about in a number of different ways. And one way they're talked about is the gold standard is to have protected bike lanes. Well, we are a four-hundred-year-old community. We don't have the real estate for protected bike lanes. So our focus is how can we install bike lanes and how can we make them safe? And making them safe means we have two levers to work with. One is visibility, and the other is timing of traffic. So we need to learn more to make sure how we can do that. But Lisa will give an update on integrating of the map of the paving plan. And then John Hershey will give an update on walk audits. Our walk audits are a great tool to understand how we can make our streets safer. Our approach is to look at where we have incidents throughout the city, and we're going to do walk audits ward by ward. We had a training seminar in January. We had around thirty-nine people attending that training seminar from a number of different communities. We had a pilot audit for Ward Two, where we have quite a bit of incidents, in the end of March. And actually, yesterday, we had a walk audit for Wards Two in Wards Three. And we have a pretty good model around how we conduct these walk audits. We could do walk audits pretty quickly. But what we want to do is take our time and involve residents from each ward for the walk audits. Residents have perceptions of where they feel safe or unsafe. We want that visibility. Our format is to take the input from a walk audit and structure it in a way that we can give to engineering that will be part of their information base as they look at changes for the future. So that's what our update will entail today. In your briefing package, I also included information of what we've learned from other communities. As example, the city of New York has implemented bicycle infrastructure. They did an exhaustive economic study to look at the economic implications pre and post-infrastructure. And it was favorable. There was increase in economic activity where they installed bicycle infrastructure, primarily around restaurants and casual shops and things like that. I also included a synopsis of a study, just to tickle your thoughts a little bit, of Paris, France. Europe, different city, different environment, different culture. They implemented rethinking their roadways and where they have motor vehicles. And the result of that was a dramatic, a six-fold decrease in air pollution in their city. And it was quite alarming. I really didn't expect that. So I just included that information in your briefing package, just as something to think about for the future. So with that, let me turn it over to Jared.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. So this is a little bit of an overview from the previous update. So Beverly Police Department has provided us with crash data from twenty to twenty-two thousand and twenty-four. The reported information was provided by the people involved in the incidents and also the observations of the officers, and then sometimes also people that witnessed the crashes and incidents that happened. My recording of this information is to try and, just as faithfully as possible, translate the information from one document to another, so there's like no editorializing there. And it's all catalogued in a spreadsheet and also on a map. So we have it digestible in a variety of different formats. So this graph shows pedestrians' incidents are on the blue line, and then cyclists and motor vehicle incidents are on the orange line. And as Carl mentioned, you can see that the rate of crashes and incidents with pedestrians and motor vehicles is significantly higher than it is with cyclists. The good news is between two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, we're seeing a slight decline. So the thicker lines are the actual numbers of incidents over those years relating to those vulnerable road users. And then the thinner lines in the same corresponding color are the trend lines. So we're actually down three percent year over year. That's statistically not super significant, but the numbers are stable, which I think is positive. You can see two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, as we came out of the pandemic, there is a bit of a spike there, especially with pedestrian crashes, which was pretty alarming to me. This is just that same information in a chart. And you can see year over year, the rates have changed, if anybody's interested in that information. It's a little hard to phrase, but basically the overall trend from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four is that cyclists and motor vehicle incidents is down eleven percent, which is great news. The bad news is that over that four-year time span, we've seen a thirty-six percent increase in pedestrian and motor vehicle incidents. So in particular, I think, you know, our walk audits are really timely, of course, in reviewing our infrastructure. And one of the observations in looking at the two thousand and twenty-four crash data shows that some of these incidents are actually happening on infrastructure that is meant to protect pedestrians and cyclists. Some of it is actually user error. So imagine like an example would be somebody riding in the bike lane in the wrong direction, and a motorist looking to their left, turning right, anticipating that traffic would be moving in that same direction they're going. And there would be a collision between the car and the bicycle because the motorist didn't look to their right and wasn't anticipating somebody using the infrastructure in an improper way. This is overall, for all the four years, and I thought that it was interesting. This isn't really surprising information, but thirteen percent of the incidents happen between seven and nine A.M., corresponding with sort of like the morning rush hour. And then a ten percent incident rate between eleven and one P.M., so typical lunchtime hour. So more people on the road. It's sort of intuitive, that information. And then between three and seven P.M. is the most dangerous time for vulnerable road users in our city, thirty percent of the time. This is just an example of, this is a screenshot of the map. And the concentration of incidents is basically on Cabot and Rantoul Street. And the red dots are indicating areas where pedestrian and car crashes happened. And the blue pins are actually where cyclists and motor vehicles had crashes. So you can see a lot of, just if I could zoom in on this, you would see it's just a very dense concentration on Rantoul and then less or so on Cabot Street. One of the things that's really positive is the police have adopted a new crash form, and it provides much more insight into the nature of the actual event that happened. So the information, the data fidelity is still variable. I think that the Police Department is becoming accustomed to using this new tool. And so I saw a range of sort of quality or level of detail in the information depending on who was making that report. But we do have a good ongoing dialogue with them, so we can talk about that and show the variance in the information, and hopefully we can gather more consistent information from that. So this is probably the most useful part of the new crash form, which gives a diagram from above of the road where the vehicle and the vulnerable road user was during that collision. And then the crash narrative is something, there wasn't even a spot, really, for anything but like a couple of comments before. And so this has provided a lot more insight as I've gone through the two thousand and twenty-four information when they adopted this. So I think it's positive. It helps us to identify, you know, things like the nature of incidents where people were hit on crosswalks, as an example, or that cyclist example that I used. The past information really wasn't as detailed, and it was hard to really visualize what happened. And I think for us, as we analyze the infrastructure and try and make recommendations on prevention, that we need to know specifics about that. So I feel that this tool is really valuable. And there's a lot more witness information as well. I don't know if that circumstance, like there just happened to be people that were there when the crash happened and that they stuck around and they gave their feedback. But either way, the trend is that our data is increasing in level of detail and quality. And so I think that that's a win. Sort of high-level takeaways here, and Carl touched on some of the most meaningful ones. Motorists and pedestrians are in incidents on average every three point five weeks. And for cyclists, it's six point five, so pedestrians are about two times more likely to be in a crash than cyclists. Now, that is reported information. There's probably a lot of other things that never get reported to the police that, you know, escape this analysis. Thirteen percent of the crashes happen in the morning commute, ten percent at lunchtime, and then thirty percent in the afternoon and early evening. And then this, these, the two bullets for Rantoul and Cabot Street, I think are interesting because it shows that there's a concentration of incidents that happen on Rantoul Street. And it stands out to me because it was recently redone infrastructure, right? So and that actually coincides with one of the areas that we did the walk audits. And so we were able to solicit feedback from people that came, but also glean a lot of meaning from that particular stretch, right? From like the post office down to Federal and Rantoul is like a real hotspot for where people tend to get into incidents. And, you know, between two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, we're seeing a leveling there, you know? So there's not a dramatic shift, which is good to see because I don't think, from an environmental standpoint, things have changed radically, right? And so if I saw that there was some anomaly in the information there, it would make me wonder about the fidelity of the data. So I think that it's a good sign, A, that it's at least consistent, we're not getting worse, but also that it tells me that the information that we're looking at is directionally accurate and stuff that we can actually act on in a meaningful way. So I'll take a moment to open it up to any questions that people have.
Councilors, any questions? Councilor Feldman?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for all of the data and the presentation. And I know you had mentioned both making recommendations and some of the feasibility of protected bike lanes and things like that. I have kind of two questions. One, when you're making recommendations, especially after the walk audits or when you see some of these hot points, one of the biggest things I run into as a counselor, kind of being the receptor of some of these issues, is I know that it's not economically feasible for us to do some of the solutions that are like preferred. And so, one, my first question is, when you are making recommendations, is like, is there a recommendation that's like ideal and then like feasible? Is that like, is it tiered? So it's like practical? But also, we could see what would be preferable if we had a budget?
Right. So there are like best practices that really are driven by user data, right? So for us, I mean, we, and this is something that we're actually going to be able to do in this year, is gather data about the number of pedestrians and cyclists that are using this infrastructure. So walking on the sidewalk, we can do it in key areas where we know that people tend to enter the downtown area and leave it. We can move them around. But I think that a lot of the interventions, if you will, would be also guided by the volume of users that are there, right? But it is a bit of a chicken and egg question because the safer people feel, the more likely they are to ride their bike, to walk, to get out of their car, and use alternative forms of transportation. But I think that the VPAC Committee and working with Lisa Chandler have a very realistic idea of what is practical in this environment. And, you know, we're not advocating turning this into one fourteen in Salem, as an example. But what we do want to see is more people use alternative means of transportation to reduce congestion and pollution and feel like that's a viable option, because I think that that is the key to participation. If you feel afraid, you're much less likely to do that, to go out on your bike, to use, to cross the street even. I mean, we had a situation on Halloween where a mother and their child were struck in a crosswalk on Bridge Street. So, you know, things like that are, you know, they're alarming to hear, but it is one data point, right? So what we have to do is try and balance what the cost benefit is. And I think that we're well-grounded as a group in terms of what we're trying to do. So I don't know if I answered your question.
No, you did. And there is a kind of a follow-up to that in terms of on Rantoul, where it's the concentration of crashes. And Carl had mentioned something about like real estate and not having, you know, the real estate to do protected bike lanes. On Rantoul, there is so much space dedicated to the bike lane. How much real estate is needed to be something of a more designated? Because right now, it's just white lines. Is there something else that could be done? Because it's a very wide, it is wide. And so I'm just wondering if there's more that can be done with simpler mitigation.
Yeah, so one of the issues with Rantoul is that that design was really meant for throughput of cars. So the travel lanes and the line of sight is very good. So as you're coming down the hill by where Crave is, as an example, and you can see that intersection where Ann Mall is, as a motorist, people are motivated to try and get through that intersection. If they have a means for driving through that and making that light, I'm, it's intuitive to me, although I don't have the physical proof, that people will drive faster to make that light. And I think the other things that you can do is at intersections, you can give cyclists a place to be where it's obvious where they belong in relation to the infrastructure, right? Like if you don't know where you're supposed to be, if those queues aren't there, then people feel sort of untethered to the environment. It makes them feel like, as a cyclist, as an example, you don't belong there. Other things that can be done are parking setbacks in relation to the crosswalks, so that motorists have better line of sight. So like if you have a crosswalk that's going across the street, and there is a car that can park just up the flow of traffic from that, somebody actually has to, I mean, it's the reason like why we did bump outs here, so they can stand on that and then the motorists can see them. Because a lot of the, especially the incidents that happen between pedestrians and motorists, pedestrians are getting hit, and motorists are saying they're not even seeing the pedestrian. Now, there are some where, and I've witnessed it myself, I'm sure everybody has, pedestrians will walk out into the street, like wearing headphones, not using auditory cues, like a car is coming, because they don't hear it and they're, you know, they're not using the infrastructure or being safe. But I think it's a combination of those things. It's like, I don't think motorists want to hit pedestrians, but I also think it's sometimes hard for them to see the pedestrians, right? And so anything that we can do to improve the visibility of all users, whether it's cars being seen by pedestrians or motorists seeing pedestrians, are going to be things that are beneficial. So, you know, like I've been teaching my son how to drive. He's sixteen. He has his learner's permit. And the distance between where the stop line is and the actual entry point into the intersection is really variable. It's all over the place. You know, residential neighborhoods are different than, you know, the downtown areas, an example, where it tends to be more consistent. But as I look at it through the lens of someone that's trying to teach a motorist to have empathy, to be aware, to think about other people on the road, to not be solely focused on one's own convenience in conveying themselves from point A to point B, that it's hard to deliver like these true statements to these young drivers, saying, this is what you can always do. It's a lot of like, in this situation, you need to look this way and that way, and then creep out over the line. And then we know that people tend to speed here, so we have to be doubly sure, you know, that type of stuff. And so I think the interventions are many, but what it boils down to is trying to make it be a way that you can give people guidance, because it feels to me like there's education here, like educating cyclists about road safety, educating motorists about vulnerable road users, like the four-foot law is really a big step to helping that. But I think it's communication. How do you communicate this to people that it resonates with them so they actually do the safe thing in the moment? Because, you know, when you're late, you're backed up in traffic on Elliott Street, whatever, and you're late for an appointment, emotions tend to take over people's actions, and that's when bad things happen to good people.
Thank you. I just wanted to just check, did you all have one more piece of your presentation? Well, I was going to say, what if, Lisa, did you ever thought about this? No, mine's about a two-minute update, but it's also all on the website. I don't necessarily have to say it. Well, if you want to hop up and give us your two-minute update, thank you. And I know, councilors, you may have other questions. I'm just, I know that we also have another presentation coming. So I also know that the Bike and Pedestrian Committee are really accessible. And so I think if we have questions, we can be reaching out to you all. Taking part in some of these walk audits, and we'll also have the luxury of having them back. We've gotten some great updates. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Well, we know that we'll have you back for another update too, which we really appreciate. So thank you. And thank you, Jared, also. Ms. Chandler, if you'd like to give us your
I'm trying.
Your quick update.
It'll go really quick.
That would be great.
If I could get it to open. No, it still is. I promise I could talk super fast. I'm from New York.
I don't know if everybody could hear you. I'm from New York.
Sorry. No one needs, no one needs. I've been here for a long time. So yes, thank you. I will not take much of your time. We were here last December, and I offered an update, and this map looks suspiciously the same because between December and now, we have not actually accomplished anything. That is now for lack of trying. The winter was not that great this year. So as you can see, paving season has started in the great city of Beverly. We are undertaking almost forty streets this year. So all of these are listed on the website, as always, if you ever are curious what's going on. Any of the streets that you see listed with an asterisk next to it is actually a street that will be receiving a treatment, whether it be signage or physical bike infrastructure. The list of streets for two thousand and twenty-six is much smaller, but still equally important. And then, just to summarize what all of that means, from the bike map that Carl mentioned was created in two thousand and fifteen, there's over forty miles of roadway identified with various treatment options provided. Almost half of that is complete to date. Another almost nine miles will be completed this year. Only three miles next year, because a lot of those are neighborhood streets. They don't require a lot of infrastructure, which leaves just about twenty-five percent of the streets with nothing accomplished at the end of the two thousand and twenty-six paving season. So starting calendar year two thousand and twenty-seven, it's about twenty-five percent of the roadway still requires treatment. As you can see, what our next step would be from all of this would be to continue working with Jared to identify which kind of treatments, if there are accidents in areas with treatments, why is it that that's still happening, things like that. But in just terms of actual infrastructure costs, it costs approximately five dollars per linear foot of pavement to stripe a line, which sounds like a lot, but that is where we are. It costs about two hundred dollars per sign. That includes the post and the time for DPW to install them. So it's going to cost about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to implement the two thousand and twenty-five infrastructure. It costs less than that, an extra fifty-five thousand dollars. About half of that requires yearly maintenance. So obviously, signage doesn't generally require yearly maintenance unless they are continually hit or stolen. But the line striping does almost always require yearly maintenance, so that's why those costs are a little different. Based on what is outstanding at the end of twenty-six, it requires about another three hundred thousand dollars to actually just get the rest of the plan implemented. About half of that is striping. The other half is signage. So all in, you're talking about probably, if I could do math in my head, almost five hundred thousand dollars of infrastructure between now and getting the rest of the plan implemented, with about half of that being an annual maintenance cost. So again, all of this on our website. We work really hard to make it accessible to everybody. Striping could be both the actual physical bike symbols, edge lines, anything that you would denote as actual infrastructure. Signage is generally, those kind of motorists give four feet to pass signage that you've seen pop up around town. There's also bike lane signage, things like that. So it varies based on how long the street is and what is necessary. So it varies based on how long the street is and what is necessary, but it's stuff that we've been doing all along. We just, we're mostly focused in neighborhood streets these days, so they don't require a lot of infrastructure. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any question really quick if anyone has one, or you could call me at any time.
I think, I think, Ms. Chandler, you're you're good for now, but we do know how to get in touch with you, we appreciate that.
You can find me, I sit right downstairs.
Yes, and to to all the members of the Bike Committee, thank you, Bike and Pedestrian Committee, thank you for being here tonight, thank you for the the pattern of updates that you're putting in place for us. I know that the councilors find it very helpful and we really appreciate the work that you're doing and this reporting that you're doing back as well. So thank you. Councilors, I would encourage you, as I said, if you have questions, it's a very accessible committee, hardworking folks, and I would encourage us to be in conversation with them as well. Thank you all very much for your work and for your time tonight, thank you. I see that the mayor is here, so that moves us right along to our second presentation, which is the State of the City address from the mayor. Welcome, Mayor, thank you. Councilors, with this one, as you know, this is an address, so there won't be a question and answer after, we do have this opportunity to hear this update from the mayor. And Mayor, if you'd like to begin by introducing your department heads and team, and we're happy to have you, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Madam President. I just, I also want to thank our Bike Advisory Committee. I was in the other room, but I was listening to you. You guys sounded fantastic and appreciate the the time and the energy and the commitment you've got. Well, maybe what we should do, oh, gosh, you know, I'm I'm gonna blank on somebody, thanks for the pressure. So I'll try to go around. We have Assistant City Solicitor Jesse Dole, Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, Wengari Fahari, City Solicitor Stephanie Williams, Assistant City Solicitor Bethel Mixon, Director of Community Services and Recreation Department Bruce Doig, our Grants Director Catherine Barrett, my Chief of Staff Jocelyn Ruell Kersker, Inspection Services Director Jim Butler, City Auditor Carol Auga Levitz, City Director of Public Services and Engineering, Commissioner of Public Services and Engineering, Mike Collins, Police Chief John Lausher, Chris Gomez, our Council on Aging Director Darlene Nguyen, our Planning Director Ibrahim Hernandez Lopez, our Sustainability Resilience Director, and Russ Fisk, our IT Director, boy, this is putting me to the test, thanks. Allison Baverne, our Library Director, Brian Deals, our Finance Director, and you know they all get bonus points for being here tonight. Dave Gellino, our Purchasing Agent, Pauline Teshar, our HR Director, let's see, Chief O'Connor, our Fire, our Fire Chief. I think I first met Chief, he was quite young, so not blanking on a name I don't know. And then we have Gabe Hanifin, our Airport Director, and we have Pete Dickman, our Harbor Master, and we have Laura Delakai, our Director of the Department of Health, our City Engineer, you heard from Lisa Chandler, and I didn't, I got you, okay.
I think you've done it.
Thank you for that, my gosh. Here I was buried in the words trying to make sure that they make sense. It's great to see you all. And 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 I also just want to say, what a fantastic weekend and huge thanks to David Perrin, chief, who was excused from being here tonight because I don't think he slept for a few days, days recovering. Dave is our Veterans Agent and he, along with the Veterans Council, along with Department of Public Services, Police, Fire, Rec, everybody who has a big role in making sure that Warrior Weekend comes off. And you may remember, three and a half-ish years ago, I guess coming up on four years ago, our Veterans Council decided to move our observances of Memorial Day to the weekend before in hopes more people would be around and would participate. And then they came up with this idea for the weekend that we now have seen for the third year in a row, which is just an incredible draw. It brings so many people in the community out to learn about all the various branches of the military and a lot of our military history. And so it's an incredible thing. And then our DPS, which has run toucher truck for years, hit on the idea, I don't know whose idea it was, I don't want to give credit where it's, but a lot of smart people decided, let's pair them up. And it just is, it's amazing how many people want to be part of and experiencing it. So an incredible weekend and along the same lines of great things happening in our community and just kind of reinforcing what a community we live in. I was able, over the last couple of weeks, to attend both the high school and the middle school National Honor Society inductions and see some incredibly impressive young folks. Also got to see the Middle School Musical last weekend, was it, it's a blur, but it was recently The Little Mermaid. And so it's incredible, all the talent we have in this community and all the dedicated people on the school side and on the city side of our government who make things happen. Now, I have some prepared remarks, and so I want to say again, good evening and thank you to both you, Council President, and all your colleagues on the council, to you folks in attendance, both members of the public and our administrative team, and anybody watching at home on BevCam. Thank you for your interest and your participation in helping to shape our wonderful city. To City Department Heads and other valued administration team members, thank you for your presence and all your good work and for your staff's good work, day in and day out on behalf of the people of Beverly. To our Beverly Public School leadership, school committee members, and dedicated school staff, thank you for all you do to educate our children and strengthen our, strengthen our community. Tonight, the state of our city is strong. We continue to invest in our talented employees, having signed outstanding, fair, three-year contracts with every bargaining unit in the city over the course of the past year. Given that all the local services our community relies on are provided by our employees, this also represents a deep investment in every resident and business owner in our great city. In Beverly, we continue to invest in our seniors, our veterans, our children, and our small business owners. And we continue to strive every day to make Beverly the amazing city that it is, a special place that we can all be proud to call home. While delivering outstanding services across the city, we have also made and continue to make huge investments in our critical infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, parks, drinking water, stormwater drainage, parks, playgrounds, beaches, and more, to ensure that public health, public safety, and equality of life every Beverly resident needs and deserves is delivered. By year's end, we will have invested well over one hundred million dollars in twelve years to improve roads, sidewalks, and intersections throughout Beverly, with improvements happening all over the city in this year alone. So far, we have secured three point seven million, I'm sorry, three point seven five million dollars in state funds for the upcoming construction of a much-needed roundabout at the section, at the intersection of Brimble Ave, Dunham Road, and the adjacent southbound highway interchange. We are working currently with state officials to secure additional funds, hoping to begin construction in late two thousand twenty five or spring two thousand twenty six. The reconstruction of Bridge Street will be completed this year in advance of the new temporary Hall Whittaker Bridge construction beginning. The installation of the traffic signal at Spring Street, I'm sorry, the intersection of Corning Street, Essex Street, and Spring Street began construction last fall and will be completed this year as well. Another way we have responsibly invested in Beverly is through our reserves. During our twelve years together, we have built our stabilization fund and cash reserves so that whenever a recession does come, we will be able to keep funding our schools, our city departments, and delivering the critical services our community needs, right on through a recession and beyond to better economic times. With twenty three point seven million dollars currently in our stabilization fund and a projected nine point five million dollars to be certified as free cash later this calendar year, our reserves together will represent over nineteen percent of our proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty six operating budget. Keeping in mind that our financial policies call for reserves equalling thirteen to twenty three percent of our operating budget, nineteen percent puts us in an appropriately strong financial position. Looking around the community, we have successfully worked with the trustees of reservations to move our community garden from Coal Street to Moraine Farm, and our community gardeners have been hard at work planting their two thousand twenty five gardens, marking our second planting season in our new home. The garden consists of ninety separate plots, which is an increase from the sixty five we had at our former home along Coal Street, and all these plots are in use. A new public parking area has been located adjacent to the community garden. Further, as agreed in the city's MOU with the trustees, formalized trail connections have been made between Moraine Farm and the city's Phillips Preserve, and the historic entry to Moraine Farm at Conan Street has been improved, all of which creates significantly greater community access to these beautiful Beverly green spaces. In late April, the city received notice from the state's Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities that we are in full compliance with the MBTA Communities Law, thanks to zoning amendments that our planning department filed and new the city council approved late last year. To refresh everyone's memories, we made minor changes to achieve the minimum required fifteen residential units per acre, and our three A district includes portions of Rantoul Street and the neighborhoods between Rantoul and Cabot Streets, and this can be found on our online zoning map. Acting on a commitment I made during my inaugural speech in January two thousand twenty four, this past year, the city's Economic and Community Development Council, whose purpose it is to advise the mayor on economic development policy and strategic initiatives, oversaw a business survey with over a hundred sixty eight responses that identified challenges faced by our local small businesses. During the same time, my administration secured an eighty five thousand dollar state housing choice grant that we are using to develop an economic development action plan, and the ECDC will participate actively with the planning department and me in this process. Ridership of the Salem Skipper, an on-demand transit service, has doubled since we expanded this service into Beverly one year ago, completing over ten thousand trips into Beverly and/or Danvers as of February, and nearly one thousand new riders have registered each month. Most riders don't own a car and half earn less than fifty thousand dollars a year. The service has enhanced regional connectivity, particularly getting people to and from their jobs or personal errands. And I might just remind us all that it was a combination of an earmark that Congressman Moulton got in one of the federal budgets in in recent years, together on our part in Beverly with some ARPA funds that have allowed us to take part in this two-year expansion of the skipper. It seems to be proving that it's very popular, which I think suggests it's very needed, and one thing we'll need to sort out is just how it can get funded in the future when those funds are exhausted by the end of the second year. This year, we also used a combination of cash reserves and remaining school COVID funds to install lights and stands at the Beverly High School turf field, a very welcome addition for our students, families, and community at large, as these provide much greater access to the field for high school and youth sports, as well as our marching band and spectators. The boost to school and community spirit provided by these new resources is measurable and exciting, and I want to be sure to thank you, councilors, for the role you took in this and the commitment and the leadership to dedicate the funding needed. Construction continues on our new Miles McPherson Youth Center, which is scheduled to open later this calendar year and will provide many of our most vulnerable young people with a safe and dynamic space to grow and learn. The new four thousand square foot building, funded entirely federally with federal funds, will be almost three times the size of the former youth center on the same site. Together with our YMCA partners who operate our youth center for the city, we can't wait to welcome our young people back to their Miles McPherson Youth Center home. In the meantime, thanks in large part to City Councilor Todd Rotundo, YMCA Executive Director Tim Flaherty, and members of the Youth Collaborative Board, and our own Department of Public Services, we opened our temporary youth center at the former Gordon's Fabrics on Park Street, where we will be until the new building is open for use. Staying with our young people, we launched our first-ever Beverly Youth Council, and thirteen young Beverly teens have spent much of the last year learning about government at all levels and about leadership. There is much enthusiasm for what the second year of the council can bring. I want to thank City Council President Flowers, who along with our former constituent services director Ronnie Jacobson, Assistant Recreation Department Director John Peadall, and Dylan Benson from the city solicitors office, have overseen the program and mentored our young Beverly youth councilors. Our work on adapting to climate change, as well as decarbonizing our own city operations, continues. Later this spring, we expect to take delivery of five new Type C or full-size EV school buses, while three more Type A or half buses will arrive later this year. Funded with both federal and state grants, this will bring our total electric school bus fleet count to thirteen, as we continue to save Beverly taxpayers money by utilizing grant funds to purchase our buses and to save significantly on fuel and maintenance costs over the lifetime of these buses, all while cutting emissions and providing our schoolchildren transportation without the harmful exposure to breathing in carbon emissions. Over the last several months, we changed the lighting in seven of our schools and at the senior center over to LED lighting, which is far more energy efficient, thereby cutting emissions and saving taxpayers money on our municipal energy bills. We continue to make progress towards protecting two of our oceanfront parks from coastal erosion and storm damage. At Obrere Park, we will be ready to file for the remaining key state and federal permits in early June to ultimately install erosion controls along the river. While at Lynch Park, we just kicked off the next phase of design and permitting with our consultant this past week, a process that will result in repairs to the seawall and further protections between the front seawall and the rose garden, as well as a plan for protecting the carriage house against future sea level rise and storm damage. This past year, our Beverly Public Library reports over one hundred sixty one thousand visits have been made by the public to our two buildings, and these visitors checked out over three hundred one thousand physical items. More than eighty nine hundred people have attended seven hundred twelve library programs for all ages. Highlighted programs include a ten-week digital literacy course, graduating sixteen people, and equipping them with Chromebooks to keep and the skills to use them. This is in partnership with the UMass Lowell Digital Equity Partnership, which is funded by the Massachusetts Broadband Institute at the Mass Tech Collaborative. Thank you, Allison, that's a mouthful of who funded that, but what a fantastic digital literacy program. Our Department of Veteran Services not only put on the incredibly successful Warrior Weekend this past Saturday and Sunday, but they have focused throughout the past year on identifying surviving spouses of veterans and ensuring that they receive benefits that are due to them. This year, our Health Department accomplished the following. They revamped the city-funded road and control program, hired the Health Department's first social services navigator through opioid settlement funds, and, yes, I was asked this question at our joint meeting with the school committee, was it just last week? So I'll say it again in front of Laura, our Health Department Director. We are going to hire a person again because we lost that person who came in and did great work for a while and then moved on. We are doing that. I think we've already green-lighted the posting, have we?
Yeah.
I told them I did. So, Pauline, we're ready to go on on staffing back up there. It's a critically important role. And so just so people understand, the opioid settlement funds will be coming over many years from a number of responsible parties who profited from opioids which they knew were addictive and cost many, many people in our, in our country and across the world. So there was a, was several class action suits, we joined in on them, and so we're getting resources to help address some of the problems and 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 challenges that have been, that that came with all of that. Let's see. Health Department began conformance with the FDA Retail Program Standards, a gold standard for food safety, began a risk-based food inspection program, went paperless for the department's permitting process, thank you, and have set a goal for FY two thousand twenty six to work in greater collaboration with our local restaurants to offer serve-safe classes for all Beverly food employees. At the senior center, each month, we spotlight different countries, regions, and cultures by having events exhibiting their music, food, dance, and history. We've also increased language access at the senior center by purchasing a translation iPad, offering Spanish classes to seniors, and having a staff member that speaks Spanish fluently. The Council on Aging has made a valiant effort to keep seniors The Council on Aging has made a valiant effort to keep seniors up to date with the newest scams by having monthly presentations by different experts in the field. We have also, also worked diligently on bridging the digital divide by offering a six-week digital literacy class, in which, once completed, seniors were able to keep the Chromebook they used during the class, as well as tech tutoring throughout the year, with seniors being able to get a tutor who specializes in their needs, whether it be a laptop, Android, or iPhone. I just know you, you just heard through the library that we were doing digital equity work as well. And I want to credit Wengari Fahari for her leadership and partnering with so many of our departments on addressing digital equity and literacy and other concerns that we know we have to address across the community. And nowhere better than through the community services departments who interact most regularly with our community, with our residents. Let's see, our social work team, oh, I can't leave this one out, sorry. To further engage with our older male population, we started our Romeo Group, Retired Old Men Eating Out, which goes out to eat once a month to different restaurants. I'll have to check that group out because I knew of a similar group up in Maine that a dear friend was, was the treasurer for, and they numbered over seventy, but when they went out to dinner, they used to try to get separate checks, and many restaurants told them, you're not welcome back. But, but what a great thing to, to get our, our older gentlemen together. Also, a Lego club meets every other week, and lots of great things happening at the senior center. I don't want to read all of it, but the social work team there has made a significant difference in the lives of Beverly seniors throughout the year. The social work team has provided vital support in navigating complex systems by assisting hundreds of seniors with housing applications, securing fuel assistance to keep their homes warm in the winter, and enrolling in SNAP to help address food insecurity. Through personalized compassionate guidance, our team helps ensure that seniors remain safely housed, nourished, and connected to essential resources, directly improving their quality of life and promoting independent living within the community. Last, at the Council on Aging, transportation access is a major barrier for many seniors. Because of this, we have made it a focal point to increase transportation access. The Council on Aging has extended hours of transportation, increased outings, shopping trips, and offered more opportunities for food access by providing regular supermarket trips. The Recreation Department has continued to work with Beverly residents Kurt and Kelly Anderson and their nonprofit alongside our Department of Public Services to install automatic external defibrillator, defibrillators, AEDs, at all parks in Beverly. We are continuing to raise funding to install forty units at thirty-seven parks in the city. The city of Beverly has invested over fifty-five thousand dollars towards this initiative, and several more units have been purchased with over twenty-two thousand dollars in private donations. Playground equipment repairs and upgrades are being planned for Gillis Park and Balt's Playground this year, as well as installing new wayfinding signs and regulatory signs at all Beverly parks, some of which you may have noticed in recent weeks. Some key park improvements are underway in the Gloucester Crossing neighborhood. Simon Street, the Simon, the two Simon Street lots, where equipment tables, benches, and players are being installed. We have worked closely with neighbors to design improvements to both fourteen and thirty-four Simon Street. You remember well that both lots were purchased by the city in August two thousand twenty-two, and new improvements were added to fourteen Simon Street in May of last year. Improvements to thirty-four Simon Street will be completed this summer. In the meantime, Holcroft Park, along Gage Street, received a state park grant and is in the process of installing a new basketball court, picnic pavilion, new play structures, a field area, et cetera. And this has come also from much work with the neighborhood to plan and install these major improvements. Stated goals of the Rec Department moving forward include, include replacing all water fountains at all city parks with ADA-accessible water fountains that also contain bottle-filling stations. And this begins with improving the access to water at Gillis Park, Holcroft Park, and other locations that are being worked on this year. Each of these projects will include new water fountains with bottle-filling stations for sustainability. Also, the Recreation Department continues to diversify recreational and educational programming for children and adults year-round. They continue to research new programs and instructors to offer a wider variety of programs for our diverse population of children and adults. In the last year, our Beverly Police Department noted a decrease in crime in Beverly. Our detectives became leaders in the region in elderly scam reduction and in returning funds to victims. And our police department also started a program on the North Shore to train police officers in recognizing those suffering from mental illness. In the Fire Department, this past year saw our Fire Department called to help at a historic number of large brush, brush fires over several weeks, and you may well remember that last, that last fall, chief? Early fall on end, yeah. While Beverly was largely spared, the event seemed to kick off on October twenty-sixth. Well, there's the timing. Just after a fast-spreading fire that threatened the Obershon Hardware Store as it burned adjacent to Wenham Lake. High winds and dry fuels caused the fire to extend rapidly towards structures as the winds blew off Wenham Lake. A quick response from our own Beverly firefighters stopped the advance, and firefighters from Danvers and Wenham ultimately helped extinguish the fire. That same evening, fires started in Salem, followed by fires in Middleton. Over the next two weeks, crews from Beverly responded to major fires in Salem, Middleton, North Andover, and North Reading, using our newly-acquired brush truck. While we mostly escaped serious woodland fires in Beverly, it isn't because we do not face the same threat. The city of Beverly has hundreds of acres of woodlands with the same fuels and the same weather conditions as our neighbors. So this past year, we started the process of looking at a complex risk-reduction effort. A major component of that effort is our wildland urban interface. Our Fire Prevention Office is working to establish a committee that will help address our concerns and ultimately help us mitigate hazards associated with our wildland fuels. This is not the first effort by the Beverly Fire Department to address potential for woodland fires. Captain Jake Kryling has worked with public services, community groups, and private landowners to ensure that the Fire Department has access to fire roads and that those roads are maintained. Our woods and trails are a beautiful part of our community, and we will work to keep them safe. Still with the Fire Department, Beverly has, as we all know, a blend of properties that are very new and very old. Codes have changed significantly over the years, and those codes require life-safety systems to protect residents. Continuously inspecting and identifying concerning properties will be crucial to making sure that our community members are safe well into the future. Okay. Sorry for my other colleagues, other department heads. I'm stopping there. There is always too much great work happening in our city to include it all in these annual remarks, but please know that our city employees do outstanding work every single day on behalf of our community. Much of it is not visible or easily shared. Many city departments do their work quietly and efficiently, and they are every bit as essential to the success of our efforts to ensure the outstanding quality of life we enjoy in Beverly. I want to take this opportunity to thank every one of our Beverly municipal team. They make our community go. This year, we'll continue together to bring concerts, clean and safely-staffed beaches, camps, programs, and trips, supports, and all kinds of needed activities and supports to the people of Beverly. We will fix, improve, upgrade, replace, and modernize all kinds of city infrastructure. We will pave streets, build sidewalks, and improve safety at intersections and along roadways for all of our users, and that's especially timely given the earlier presentation on, on bicycle and pedestrian safety, all throughout our city. And this year, as all years, we will work every day to make sure that all of our neighbors are safe, to make their homes, and live their lives in this city we love. And here, I just want to take it to the very human level. Right now, and especially since January, we have friends, family members, neighbors, and loved ones who are threatened by actions being taken in Washington. These include immigrants, people of color, and our LGBTQ plus community, especially our transgender residents. And yes, these are our friends and our family members, our neighbors and our loved ones. These are Beverly residents who, just like us, are trying to build and live a life in the city we all have chosen to call home. Here in Beverly, we can and we must stand strong together and protect the rights of all Beverly residents. In truth, the diversity in our community is a big part of what makes Beverly strong. In this moment in history, I believe we are called to be especially kind to one another. We are called to live with love and compassion, and we are called to stand up with and for those who have been targeted and threatened. In this spirit, I invite you, my colleagues in government, and I invite our community to join us next month, on June fifth, as we celebrate Pride Month in Beverly. And on June sixteenth, I get the date right? I think so, yep. As we celebrate Juneteenth in Beverly, as we celebrate our diversity and everyone who makes up the fabric of our community. So to wrap, yes, colleagues and friends, the state of our city is strong, and our determination and our commitment to care for each other shows this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, for being here and sharing that State of the City address with all of us. Counselors, as I said, with the State of the City address, we don't have a question-answer time, but we will have ample opportunity for lots of conversation about the state of the city going forward as we're entering our budget process in the coming month. And so, of course, we'll have lots of conversation with you, Mayor, and with members of your team. But thank you very much for being here, and thanks again to all of the city staff, department heads who are here this evening, those who couldn't be here this evening, and for all the work that you do day in and day out for our community. Thank you.
Counselors, we will go now to the next item on our agenda. That's acceptance of minutes of previous meeting. We have one set of meeting minutes that we can approve. We have the minutes from our regular city council meeting from April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? All those in favor? That carries nine zero. Thank you. Ms. Kent, let's go to communications from His Honor, the Mayor, please.
Order number one sixty-three, proposed amendment to Chapter sixty-nine, Article two, Section sixty-nine dash nine, City Personnel and Sick Lead.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order one sixty-four, reappointment for Kevin Assalillo for Sherwood Lane to serve on the Beverly Housing Authority.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order one sixty-five, appointment for Paul Scamanna for Whittaker Way to serve on the Beverly Golf and Tennis Commission.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order one sixty-six, reappointment for Robert Bushbaum, thirteen, I mean, twelve Bertram Street, to serve on the Conservation Commission.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number one sixty-seven, reappointment for Cynthia Montalbano, twenty-two Pond Street, to serve on the Council on Aging.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order one sixty-eight, reappointment for William Squibb, five oh nine Cabot Street, to serve on the Conservation Commission.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Let's go to communications from other city officers and boards.
Order one sixty-nine from Counselor Spang and Counselor Sweeney have proposed amendments to downtown parking ordinance on Wallace Street.
Counselor Spang, Counselor Sweeney, anything you'd like to say at this time about this one? Okay. Thank you. Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order two seventy-nine A from President Flowers, a request to establish a school zone for the North Shore Education Consortium Schools on Soya Road. Order number two seventy-nine below for unfinished business is part of that.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. This is just a follow-up on order two seventy-nine of two thousand twenty-four, as Ms. Kent said. So we'll refer this to Public Services for this evening and in the hopes that we can take care of that this evening. Let's go to communications, applications, and petitions, please.
Order number one seventy, the Department of Public Utilities, notice of filing public hearings and requests for comments.
I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file. All those in favor? Carries nine zero. Thank you. And then, under unfinished business from a previous meeting, as just mentioned, order two seventy-nine of two thousand twenty-four pertains to the request to create a school zone near the North Shore Education Consortium. So we had a follow-up to that that will be in Public Services this evening. We have a few law licenses that continue to be in process, so those will remain there. And Counselor St. Hilaire, your order number sixty-five, the request from the update from City DIB Director Wengari Fahari, she'll be coming on June second at our meeting for that presentation. But we'll keep, thank you. Counselor, is it okay with you if we keep order sixty-five here until we have the presentation?
I would appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselors, I would entertain a motion to take a brief break for some subcommittee work. All those in favor? That carries nine zero. Counselor St. Hilaire, Finance and Property doesn't have anything on the agenda? Okay. So Finance and Property does not need to meet this evening. Let's have Public Services stay here in the chamber and Legal Affairs in the committee room, please.
All right. I will call to order this meeting of the Public Services Committee. All members are present. It is eight-ten. We have a few items we can act on tonight. And I will ask folks.
I can, I can make louder. There we go.
We're moving into committee meeting, so there is, I think, room in the hallway for conversation since we're not using the bench tonight. So I would like to first take order one fifty-nine, which is the appointment for Dr. Chilipowski, if I've got it right, who is here with us. This is an appointment to serve on the Board of Health. And when we have appointments in front of us, we like to give appointees the opportunity to ask us questions, share what you're thinking about in joining the board, and in case there are any questions from the committee. So first, is there a motion to approve order one fifty-nine?
So move.
So moved.
Second.
All right. So for discussion, first, I think, always our gratitude for stepping up to play an important role in the city. And I guess, are there questions from the committee to start?
No, I'm all set.
All right. Then priorities that are on your mind, things that we can help with, or questions about the committee?
I think, first of all, I wanted to thank you very much for accepting my volunteer in this position, and I feel very honored that I can serve. I think I have enough experience and knowledge and knowledge about the local community to be productive and useful in this position. So I did some research. I already had a chance to meet with the department head, and I think that I understand the capacity there are, and I hope that I can serve in a way that will be helpful to our community. So if you have any questions?
Nope. Thank you for volunteering, and we look forward to you helping us out in the city and on the board. Thank you so much.
And your resume certainly shows your qualifications, so thank you for volunteering your time.
I'll be happy to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it's been a pleasure getting to know you through other committee work in the city and to see your experience. So the Board of Health, being one of the boards that has its own remit and decision-making authority rather than an advisory board in some cases, it's good to hear that you're already in touch with the Health Director, because that is a fully-staffed board as well. So I think process-wise, so the committee can recommend that the appointment move forward. It'll be voted on tonight by the full council, and then the city clerk's office will be in touch about the conflict of interest and ethics forms, and then can get you sworn in. I don't know if we have the date for the next Board of Health meeting, but unless there is a time crunch, it's usually...
It's Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be in touch with Laura.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm available, and I'll adjust my schedule accordingly.
Great. So we can double-check to make sure that it's processed in time for that next meeting. All right. Then, in that case, all those in favor of approving that?
All right.
So that passes three to zero.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you. And if you want to stick around, you are welcome, but it will just go back for a vote in the report out, so no need to stick around.
It means that I can...
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have Order 158 is the appointment of Jennifer Snyder to serve on the Waste Reduction Committee. I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that item?
No.
All right. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is also recommending approval of the appointments. We also want to act tonight, if we can, on the request to establish a school zone for the Northshore Education Consortium schools on Sawyer Road. So is there a motion to recommend that the council vote to create a school zone in this area and direct our Department of Public Services to install the appropriate signage along the stretch of Sawyer Road?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Very much needed up in that area with all the buses, and it's just right, you know, up above the high school, and we already have the school zone for the high school, so I see it important that we carry it up through there also.
Agreed. And I think the extensive work that went into putting that package together makes it an easy one to move through. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Also, let's see, this is 279A. This is three to zero. Two other items to touch on tonight. One, we've been holding the Notice of Phase Four Remedy Implementation Plan, Order 138, for the Varian Site. I know many members of the council were able to attend the rescheduled public meeting. There is still an open comment period until, I believe, May 28th. And so, we can recommend that the council submit a comment letter. I did not come with a draft prepared. We can create a few points tonight, or recommend that the council sort of delegate to draft a letter circulated for sign-on outside of the meeting, I believe. Or we can recommend that this be placed on file, and councillors submit individual letters as they see fit. Is there any sense of the committee?
I went there, and they really, they gave us better than what I expected as far as presentation on the change, and the changes that they were going to make. They were reasonable, forthcoming, with everything that had happened, the reason why for the change. And I, for one, I think I would let us individually if we wanted to. I think what they're looking at and what they're looking to press forward with, and how they're constructing it, and the way they came about it, it makes a lot of sense to me. But that would just be myself, as far as in this and in talking with some of the...
Any further thoughts?
No.
Great. So I would largely agree as well. I think the meeting was important, the information that came out of it, very helpful, the direction seems on track or back on track. So I think it's helpful for folks to be watching it closely, and would suggest that we report this out to be received and placed on file, and can add the comment that comment letters are encouraged individually, but that we don't see a need to do it as a council action.
And if members of the public want to submit, they're welcome to as well. It's not just city council.
Yeah. And that's at the BeverlySiteCleanUp.com website. Excellent. All right. So is there a motion to receive, recommend this be placed on file?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And the last piece, we do have a couple of appointments that we'll hold for next meeting because we've just received them, but we do still have Order 162 held in committee. That is the update on national grid work, and we have just sent out a request for national grid representatives to come to a future meeting, so we'll keep folks posted as that gets scheduled.
Great.
I believe that is all we have on our agenda. So is there a meeting, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are well within our...
Thank you so much, everyone. Call the full council back to order following that subcommittee break. Thank you, subcommittees, for your work, and subcommittee chairs. Ms. Kent, let's go to reports from committees, please.
Order 169, Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom referred the matter regarding a proposed amendment to downtown parking ordinance for Wallace Street, have set a public hearing for June 2nd at 7:45 PM.
Councillors, I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee for our June 2nd meeting at 7:45 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That carries nine zero, so we will have that public hearing at our next regular meeting following our presentation from Ms. Fahari.
Order number 138, from Public Services, a notice of Phase Four of Remedy Implementation Plan for former Varian Site 150 Sawyer Road, have received and placed on file, but Councillor Bowen would like to say something.
Thank you, Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. Only to note that we had discussed the possibility of submitting a joint council letter if needed, and felt in committee that the recent public meeting answered a lot of questions, would still encourage councillors to submit letters of public comment by the May 28 deadline if interested, and members of the public as well. That comment period is still open.
Thank you very much, Councillor Bowen. Councillors, I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file as recommended.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Order number 158, Committee on Public Services, to whom referred the matter regarding an appointment for Jennifer Snyder, 75 Dodge Street, to serve on the Waste Reduction Committee, have considered said matter and beg lead to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That carries nine zero. And just for anyone following the process here, is that the council, having recommended to designate a school zone following parking and traffic, having sent us back their recommendation that a school zone there is appropriate, the next step is just for us to send the order to Public Services to install that signage, order and install that signage, so thank you. So this is Old Business? Thank you.
Order number 279, from Old Business, to whom referred the matter regarding a letter for councillor to recommend the safety concerns of the Northshore Education Consortium to parking and traffic, have considered said matter and beg lead to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
So this was the original order. We did just vote to set the school zone. I would entertain a motion to receive the original letter and place it on file.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries nine zero. Thank you. That's all I got. Oh, all right. Councillors, that's the end of our business to report out this evening. Are there any announcements or reminders for members of the council? Councillor Houseman?
Yeah, for any of those who might not have picked up on it, Legal Affairs, we'll meet at 6:00 PM before our next full council meeting to discuss the Order 163, the mayor's buyback provision to amend our ordinances. That'll be the primary, probably the sole thing we discuss at Legal Affairs. I think pretty much everyone can attend, maybe one or two cannot, but the majority of the council will be there, as will the mayor and KP Law.
Thank you very much, councillor. Are there other announcements or reminders for members of the council? Councillor Spang?
Thank you. The mayor is hosting a neighborhood meeting for Goat Hill tomorrow night at Gillis Park at, I want to say, yep, at 5:30. If it rains, it'll be here in Chambers, but otherwise, it'll be at Gillis Park to talk about all of the infrastructure work and roadwork that's happening throughout the Goat Hill neighborhood this summer and paving season.
Thank you, Councillor Spang. Other announcements or reminders? Well, I will mention that the mayor, in his State of the City, did mention our first session of having a Beverly Youth Council. So I just wanted to mention that as one of the projects the youth councillors have put together, they're having, they're hosting a city hall open house this Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, specifically trying to invite their peers and other younger students in Beverly as well, to help young people be able to come here, meet members of our city teams, learn more about their city government. But it certainly is open to adults and to everyone who might be interested and want to extend the invitation to members of the council as well, if you'd like to stop by, meet some of those youth councillors, and just get to hear a little bit about what they're doing. Councillor Houseman, did you raise your hand?
Yes. Also, for those in Ward Four, the Beverly Cove Improvement Association is having its annual meeting at 7:00 PM this Wednesday evening.